Hey everyone, welcome back to our ACP 420 study session. I'm not flying solo, but Bob is quickly looking things up because Rodney is not with us. For the first few minutes, he said it was gonna be running a little late. So this is me doing my best dad jokes that I could possibly do to keep you all entertained while I stop for Bob or amazing King Bob. To find where we left off with the training material. So worry not, we will be picking it up in just a few moments, but um. Hopefully y'all are better, having better luck than me. But while Bob is bringing that up for anybody following along, our capacitor life, I did manage to. Get my capacitor, I did receive it, I showed it off last time, but. As I went to get it installed, um, actually took, went through the entire effort, pulled out the old one, do it. We did a diagram to figure out which cables went where and there's a lot of actual science that goes behind these capacitors. My wife's like, is that wire supposed to be hanging out outside? And so right outside the compressor, there was a wire. And when I grabbed it from the tip, like it was, it was totally burnt out. So. Uh, we called them some professionals because even though I worked at an HVAC company for three years, they don't teach you how to work on HVACs. So um, we ended up going with the professional and all day today. We've been having people in the attic, changing out everything up there and then people outside. Changing everything out there, but the sad part is Southern California, we're like gonna be in the eighties from now until like Christmas. So. Womp womp womp, I'll have to wait until next August to actually test out our HVAC. Bob, how are we doing? Any, uh, I think the people are getting bored of.
I don't, I don't know if the people are getting bored. I'm, let me, uh. Now you're, now you're gonna make me click on YouTube and.
I was like, let me remove you while you meet your tabs. While Bob figures his life out, I asked Rodney for full disclosure, folks, Rodney gave me a heads up and he said, I'm gonna be out. Or a little late, uh, can you, can you run it? And I'm like, yeah, but I don't know where we left off. Because I haven't been following along, I haven't been sharing my screen, I'm just participating. And um, Ronnie, of course, well, we left off where we left off, very helpful, Rodney, so not very helpful at all. Sean, how are we doing? Um, I was just walking everybody through my air conditioning woes. But you, of course, have been brought up to speed because uh, you were, uh, you were there with me. So hello, everyone. Um, but yeah, another warm day in Southern California, uh, and we are gearing up, we are two weeks away, in two weeks, Ronnie and I will be in Barcelona. We'll be in Barcelona, having the time of our lives and. It'll be my first time out of the country, uh, the big book of Atlassian will officially go to the printers as soon as I get on that plane, I'm gonna spend the first 12 hours. Kind of uh, proofreading everything, making sure it's all looks good. And then we're sending it off to the printers on Saturday morning and. By the time I get back from Barcelona, we'll have our first official copy in our hands, that's gonna have. Basically everything in it, all the ads and all the playbooks and everything else like that. So. Super excited, uh, this book is coming along, it's, it's kinda cool to write and different experience in the other book. That Bob and I and Rodney and Edgar wrote, so definitely a slightly different experience. Alright Bob, installing for you yet again, how are we doing?
I'm, I'm definitely not finding the uh, the learning path that.
Right? It's like Ronnie kinda went off on his own.
Uh, there are, there are three, three learning paths.
Yep.
Beside the uh, certification prop one, which we already, uh, which we already went through. And on the other ones, I'm not seeing where we were, cause the last thing we talked about was permissions.
Yep.
And then uh, moving on to requests. And I am not seeing the course from. Permissions to, to this.
Well, Sean, I don't know what you're hearing about bachelor parties, I am not going to bachelor parties, but there's gonna be a lot of events that Rodney and I are gonna be present at. And the schedule is stacking up. I really don't, I have like no idea. How we're gonna do this or how we're gonna pull it off, because here's, here's my problem, right? So Barcelona is nine hours ahead. So um, yeah, and, and so he is going to the last video, Sean, and we're just trying to find the actual course itself. Right? The, the actual course is a plethora of courses that Atlassian gives you and um. We're just trying to find the right one.
Yeah, Sean, cut me some slack.
Yeah. As a producer though, Bob, I expected a lot more.
Well, I'm, I'm the producer of the main show, I'm not a producer of this. Be a, I'd be paying a lot more attention if I was producer of this.
We, we share the, we share the load on this series. You don't put the videos on 1.5X like I do, maybe you gotta go back like two or three videos to find out which, which learning track he went down. We just completed, if you remember, he just got a badge recently. Cause remember Sarah was like, you got the badge and I think that one had been last week. So he messed, he must have definitely started a new one. Let's ping him on Slack and tell him where you at.
Alright, that's.
Looks good too. Alright, so just to keep you all updated and then uh, entertained us. If you're going to Barcelona or if you're thinking about going to Barcelona, or maybe you wanna have a little bit of FOMO about what's going on in Barcelona. Um, let me walk you through our day to day right now. So Sunday, so Ronnie and I arrive on Saturday, we're gonna get there in the late evening. Late afternoon, probably, early evening. And um, I never been through a customs, I never been through international, so we're, we're gonna see how long it takes for me to get actual baggages. And hopefully they don't send me right back and get back to California. So I hope when we get into Spain. Then my plan of attack is hit up a McDonald's and then go to sleep. What do you think?
I, actually, I, I would like you to shoot video of you guys hitting a McDonald's, but. You can only order. Menu items that you cannot get at a, at a US McDonald's.
I don't wanna die on the first day, Bob.
You're not gonna die, yo, it's, and, and if you do, it's free healthcare, so.
For cities.
Where's your, where's your, where's your, where's your inner Anthony Bourdain, no reservations, I mean.
That, that ship sailed when I got a 13 year old kid.
I don't think so.
We're not young anymore, Bob.
Well, I, I know I'm not young anymore, but you, you know.
The age of exploration has long left us.
Oh, please.
Anyways, we're hitting up the McDonald's, we're gonna go take a nap.
Go, yeah, if, if there, if there is a McToppus, I want B-roll of you eating the McToppus.
It'll be on Instagram, you guys follow me on Instagram, we'll, we'll definitely put him live on Instagram on the spot as they're happening. Alright, so there's, there's that and then um, wait, Ronnie is answering and he's over here watching us.
He's watching us flounder, okay, and vamp, where is he?
He just pinged me, does Atlassian prevent you from selling? Merch, oh, um.
That's, that's a different topic, Rodney.
Yeah.
Rodney, what's the name of the learning path? Cause I'm not finding it.
Ronnie, if you're watching and you're just like, sitting there laughing wherever you're at. Wait until I get a 12 hour flight with you. Those air marshals are gonna have a word with that, when we're done with you. Okay, so we wake up, now here's gonna be the bigger problem, Bob, I'm gonna wake up at what I anticipate to be 1 AM Barcelona time. And then I'm gonna wonder, is the McDonald's open at that time? And hopefully. No, but not seriously, I have to figure out how to sleep while I'm awake because. The events kick off at like 1 AM Pacific time. And um, we gotta go and. Get to, so this is what, the only thing I'm not liking about this whole Barcelona trip is that nothing is local, like everything's so far away and I'm not all about that public transit. And so we gotta get afar, like four or five miles away from the.
A, a, a walking is good for you. You, you are, you, you are California car culture here and we have to break you of that and that means. If you, if you, if you have to walk a, you know, if you have to turn your 15,000 steps to 30,000 steps a day, then you know, so be it. But you know, it's, it's what keeps the uh, Europeans a lot healthier and they eat more, uh, I mean, they're eating ham and you know.
I did hear that the amount of walking you do kind of counteracts all the eating you do, cause they eat, and they eat late, right? I heard they eat like at 11 PM is when they're having dinner.
Yeah.
He gave us a link, or he gave me a.
Well, he, he gave you the link, so that means you're showing it.
Here, 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 I'm giving it to you.
Okay, fine.
Oh, this is, we should maybe Bob, make an uh, a hat tip to, you and I used to do one of the very first ACPs of these sessions, remember? Did you and me?
Yep.
Back in the day?
I was.
Okay, I can show it if you want.
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm on it.
This homie, he's just pinging me directly. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna make it out to the ship it event, or the ship happens. Uh, we're gonna get out there, that's gonna be a full day of conference or a full day of packing. It's an interesting concept though, because there's no agenda and the agenda is being set by the people, so we'll see how good, we're gonna put agile self-organizing, self-organizing teams to the practice now. We'll come back with some data points after. I don't know how much I believe in a self-organizing group of people that have never, never really worked together. Uh, so we'll do that and then there's a dinner that are happy hour after and then. That'll conclude Sunday night and then. Go back to sleep, cause next morning is Partner Accelerate. And it's two days of Partner Accelerate before the Atlassian conference actually kicks off. And we get to meet world team player Carlos. I don't forget his last name.
Carlos Sains?
Yeah, there you go.
Yes.
Is he the, he's a Tuesday keynote, right? Or was that Google? Okay.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's like the uh, opening keynote.
Yeah, so we'll get to see and hang out with him, Rodney and I will be in the front row, cause we're champions and we get to be in the front and then um. And that, then there's happy hour, so I'm going to happy hour on Tuesday night. I think it's going with App Box, I think that was an App Box happy hour and then Wednesday is the actual conference. I'm gonna be taking certifications on Wednesday and on Tuesday.
I think Rodney is too.
Yeah, right, well Rodney's doing it on Tuesday, I'm doing it Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, I'm taking advantage of the fact that there's six free certifications. So I'm just gonna do as many as humanly possible. And um.
Well, good luck, good, good luck on those.
The only bad thing is I don't understand why Atlassian would do this, but they scheduled the certification during the keynote.
Yeah, I was kinda wondering when you said you'd be missing the keynote.
But I don't, I don't get why Atlassian would schedule, uh, uh, like I would have done in the hour before. And then the other thing I didn't particularly appreciate was, Atlassian was like, yeah, so. Cause it's like a three hour gap and I'm like, oh, I need 20 minutes. Can I just show up after the keynote? I'll still have like an hour and a half to take the test after the keynote.
I think what Rodney meant was we are starting. Uh, we're starting on the. I guess we're starting on this course, this, we're starting this learning path.
Alright, so you're.
What I'm showing?
Cause people over here getting Nancy.
Yeah, but it's Sean, so who cares?
Who cares? Hey, 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 he's a member of the channel, you gotta treat her members nicely.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I, you're right, I, well, I should, I should.
Alright, are we ready? Cause then I just, all I gotta tell you guys is we have like three parties on Wednesday, so Wednesday night's gonna be stacked. And then Thursday is the keynote, or Thursday is the last day, then we get the bash party at night. And then we got Friday, some downtime, Ronnie and I are gonna be tourists on Friday. And then Friday night, we're taking a train to Madrid to hang out with Feide. And the rest of the Spanish team out there and then Saturday, we're doing the touristy things in Barca.
Out of, out of idle curiosity, just how much uh, exercise of. Your Spanish speaking mind are you gonna be engaging in?
Though I plan on only speaking Spanish.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's one of my goals, I'm only speaking Spanish while I'm out there.
And, and, and the true Spaniards are gonna be like, do, do you think their reaction will be admiration or?
No, I think it'll be great, well, you gotta remember, Bob, during Team 25 Anaheim, I hung out with the Spanish team at Disneyland and we did the whole thing in Spanish. Ah, five hours ago, I think it's gonna be great, it's gonna be, I feel bad for, I feel like Rodney. I feel like Rodney's gonna be like Sarah, because uh, during Team 25 Anaheim, it was the whole Spanish team. And then Valerie and myself, and we just all spoke Spanish and so Sarah was like the only one like, what's going on? I lost one person at Disneyland. One person. And I've never lost anybody at Disneyland ever in my life until I lost one, Jorge. So we'll do better. Alright, we are ready to go, only 15 minutes to get our act together.
And, and I don't even know if this is the right one, so you know, hopefully we're not like repeating any content. Um. But if we are, maybe, maybe we're just helping reinforce the content too, so. I guess we'll have to find out when we make the supercut of this.
I know, right, the extended edition, alright, yeah, what is IT service management? I don't have the, the voice like Sarah.
So we're gonna be looking at IT service management. Um, and in there, we first need to know, we first need to have our definition, right? What is IT service management or as we abbreviate it to ITSM? Uh, what are we talking about when we talk about ITSM? What are the main benefits of doing ITSM and then there are going to be some guiding principles of it? So let's start with figuring out what ITSM actually is. So ITSM or IT service management or information technology service management.
It's the first place I've ever seen it spelled out all the way, so kudos to whoever wrote this article.
It is, alright, it's how IT teams manage the end to end delivery. Of IT services to their customers, so uh, this isn't just the help desk. Or the people that you call. Um, and the first response out of them is, well, did you turn it off and turn it back on? Right, um, there are other things beyond the service desk that um, the IT groups do. And all of these facets are covered under IT service management. So you might see things like um, them. Managing or overseeing the technology, the laptops, the servers, the AWS clouds, the um. You know, those, those particular types of services.
Dare I say what ServiceNow is traditionally used for?
You would say that is what ServiceNow is traditionally used for, ServiceNow is a big player. In the um, software that handles IT service management.
But not the only player, because if you want bad ServiceNow, you go with ServiceNow. What about the BDSM convention, was that not the right one?
That was not the right one, it's BSM, right? Bad service management, you go with, you go with.
Such a great ad, I wish that one would have been on the internet's more. Wrong type of BSM.
Yep. Alright, so um. ITSM is gonna include all the processes and activities for designing, creating, delivering and supporting IT services, so. Uh, what exactly is an IT service? It is something that is provided to users, um. Uh, end users or employees of a business, so that the business can function right. So this could be, uh, you get a new job and as part of the new job, you get a company laptop. Or a company laptop and a dock and a big screen. And a keyboard and mouse and a phone, right? Uh, it could be getting access to specific applications. Uh, for uh, and those applications could be uh, software. Like Microsoft Office or it could be applications that are. Uh, software as a service base, like are SAS based, like Jira and Confluence and Trello and, and Bitbucket. Uh, you know, there might, you might need help with passwords, either. Getting the initial password or resetting the passwords. And IT groups may be responsible for making sure that the. Desktops, laptops are up to date with the latest antivirus. And operating system security fixes, right? And finally, as Alex showed, you know, uh, some of the assets in IT service management may come in the form of. Uh, cell phones and so those get managed too. Alright, so what are some guiding principles of ITSM? Uh, you want to uh, collect customer feedback regularly so that. You can improve on your service. You want to establish a clear business vision. And you wanna standardize the organization's IT services. So. Actually. Uh, alright. And this is not working. Oh, these boxes, alright, so what do you want by customer feedback, we want to um. Identify values like efficiency, reliability, innovation, cost effectiveness and then uh. You wanna prioritize your work so that uh, those values are supported. And a typical way of doing that is through feedback surveys, like when a. Run, when a request is completed, oftentimes you may get a uh, survey automatically sent to you. So that you can supply feedback. So establishing a clear business vision, you want to understand the desired direction. So where is the business going? What are the mission, the goals and the objectives of the business? And then finally, you want to standardize the organization's IT services. You wanna make sure that there are, that the services provided to all levels of the organization, to all. Parts of the organization are, are uniform and it's typically done through a uniform organizational structure. Which may include what services are being offered. And how those services are delivered, whether they're delivered in-house or they're outsourced to a contracting company. Alright, so let's see how a typical ITSM uh, business flow happens. Uh, we have Michaela here. And she needs help from the IT team to get a new keyboard for her work computer, cause. You know, she really likes those mechanical keyboards. And she needs a new one, cause she broke the, her old one, so she submits her request. Alright, fills out the request with all the relevant information, this may be done on a portal. Uh, the request lands in the queue. For the IT team, the IT team uh, triages or sorts out the incoming requests and then um. Lines them up based on um, importance. Uh, the IT team then responds, uh, and they may give Michaela an option. What keyboard do you want? Do you want the one for the PCs or one for the ma, for the Macs? So Michaela can then respond, selects one, one of the two. The IT team then orders it and coordinates the delivery, Michaela receives it. IT team confirms that uh, she's received it and she's satisfied and then the IT team can then close the request. And yeah, Sean, you're right. Michaela is probably a bit rough on the equipment there. So the benefits of ITSM and you want the structure. So that uh, it's easier for IT to be in line. With the overall business goals, so that the delivery of services is um. In, in sync with budgets, with resources and, and with results. Um, having this structured approach also helps to reduce costs, also helps to reduce risk. And ultimately it improves the customer experience and then here. Uh, here's a list of the common benefits of ITSM. We wanna make sure IT teams are, are aligned with business priorities. We have cross department collaboration. We bring IT and development teams together. Uh, through agile project management approaches and this is a big part of. Uh, ITIL, the information technology infrastructure libraries, which is now.
But I, a lot of companies that follow ITSM usually come down this route, cause they're trying to be ITIL compliant.
Yes, yes, and ITIL 4 was a big revision, which uh, leveraged heavy on agile project management approaches. So and how to, how to bring that in line. Uh, we empower IT teams to share knowledge and continuously improve, uh, we. And uh, we improve uh, request coordination for more efficient services. And then we promote customer centricity. Um, so if you have more efficient processes, you know, it's easier for. Uh, it's easier to make customers happy. Um, you know, Sean asked, how is she working while waiting for all this to happen? Well, maybe it was a. Uh, maybe it was a very, very quick delivery.
I don't think so.
Talking like, you know, we're, we're talking like, you know, if it's a really efficient process, a better process, she's probably getting that keyboard within an hour. Uh, we reduce costs by better budget management, reduce downtime, optimize resource utilization and then we prevent future incidents because teams. Respond more quickly to the major incidents. Alright, we got a, how have we learned here? Alright, so. Acme, Acme Incorporated, you know, with their uh. We, we know about Acme Incorporated because of their number one customer, a certain Mr. Wiley E. Coyote. Uh, they're setting up their IT services. What are some of the key principles they should keep in mind to deliver high quality IT services? What would make Mr. Coyote happy? Alright. All correct responses.
Oh, we're reading questions now, okay.
So the, for uh, does that include establishing a clear business vision? Does that include standardizing the organization's IT services? Does that include collecting customer feedback regularly to improve service? Does that include assigning the entire team to high priority tickets? And does that include executing the repetitive processes manually?
Ooh, couple of those sound really bad.
Yeah.
I think the last two would be something that I would not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm afraid of checking those two, I don't think so.
I would have checked those two, so that puts us up to the top three.
Alright, top three?
They both, and all three of them feel right, so I'm gonna go with it.
Alright.
My lasser.
And, but it don't, you are correct.
Well, you clicked, so we're correct too. Uncoordinated high five.
Alright, so.
They should make an official like meme for uncoordinated high five. Next lesson.
Supporting your ITSM team with project configurations, you can organize with work categories. Portal groups and queues, automating with workflow transitions, approvals and rules. And then keep your team updated with notifications and on-call rotations. Uh, while we are going to this. Uh, as a palate cleanser, what is the big book of Atlassian?
It is a giant book, we, we getting a question here, so we got a book, it's gonna be about 200 pages long, um, and it's. Basically full of guides and checklists and run books and like everything you could possibly need to just know a lot of the main. Bigger, common things you do in the Atlassian ecosystem. It's split up into a couple of different sections, so we have like all this administrator stuff, so. You'll seen, you've seen bigger books, our other book was like 600 pages, wasn't it Bob?
Yeah.
So it's, it's a pretty big book, but I guess we, stay tuned for the bigger book of Atlassian coming in 2026. But yeah, it's, it's separated into admin stuff, so like the right things to think about when you're making a project, things like this, right considerations. Then we have a bunch of agile stuff, so from an end user perspective, like how to use the tools. And then we have a bunch of forged stuff, which appropriately aligned with our three tracks for the Atlassian conference. Happening October 22nd to the 24th in person at the Hilton Long Beach. Alright, it's almost here, it's like a month from now, I'm gonna be walking off of a stage and. Being very happy that it's over.
Alright. So we're gonna take a look at how your service management supports your ITSM team. Uh, through the use of project configuration, so we're gonna see how uh, JSM. Can organize your teams work through. JSM can organize your teams' work through work categories, portal groups and queues. How you can use your service management under the hood to automate your team's work through workflow transitions, approvals and JIRA automation. And then you can keep your team up to date through notifications and through escalation policies. So first things first, let's take a look at work categories, portal groups and queues. So within JIRA, you can actually, let me step back. Within JIRA Service Management, you have the ability to segregate out different aspects of ITSM through different kinds of management. And you can set up incident management, you can set up which which is the when things go wrong, look here type of type of operation versus request management, which is what Michaela used to order a new keyboard because she broke the old one versus change management, we need to update the operating system on some servers. And this is going to impact our application. Right? So those different aspects, incident management, request management, change management. Those are three of the work categories that you have within JIRA Service Management. They group together project features based upon the type of use or the the type of outcome you want your end user to to experience. All right. So these different work categories have turn on, enabling these different work categories allow you to turn on different features within JIRA Service Management. We talked about this before where you could do things like enable change management. And then when you do that, you get the change request request types and workflows and underlying underlying work item types. All right. So if you enable project management work category, you get the features such as problem logging for your post incident repeat reviews or your postmortems. Root cause investigation workflows, and then you can group together your incidents.
So I'm still trying to figure out what this is.
What what is?
This this work category. I don't know that I've ever actually seen him.
It's basically how the request, how you can group together like your different types, okay, right? Change management is typically changes.
But these are the items on the left, not necessarily the groups within the portal, right?
Correct.
These will be the left column that is only really available in the ITSM project template.
Right.
Correct. Yeah, I avoid the ITSM project template at all costs. So I always use the the general one.
So if 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 we jump back to what we talked about before about ITIL and if you're in ITSM, you you implement ITIL. If you notice that the last word in ITIL is library. Every single, every single category, work category in ITIL version three is quote unquote, a book in that library. You have a big section on what you do for change management. You have a big section on what you do for request management. You have a big section on what you do for incident management and problem management and knowledge management. And those those divisions make up your ITIL library, so to speak. So so the work categories are basically a way of kind of implementing out your ITIL library. If you're following version three of of ITIL.
But we're on the now version four.
But we're now on version four. There's still a a reference to service management and request management and change management and and so forth. But a lot of the emphasis is more on the how this gets implemented through working with agile development teams. All right, so we have our teams here. The Gandalf team. They're an incident response team. So they use they have an ITSM project, but they only enabled incident management. They don't enable change management. They don't enable request management. They're concerned about what happens when things go south. And by enabling incident management, they can access the incident timeline. They can have alerts and on-call scheduling. Our Titan team may want to do only change management. So you disable all the other work categories. So no incident management and
I just turned them all off.
Yeah, I know you would. And then you have the Olympian team. They decide as rule, they're never going to cover post incident reviews. So they disable it. That would go by disabling problem management. And you can see here how this is done. If you are a project admin for a JSM project and you go to project settings, you go here to features and you've seen us demonstrate this before. We click on to features and the right side will give us a bunch of sliders, whether we want to check or check our work categories, including service request management, incident management or project or problem management. Now, another way.
This is what I'm familiar with. This I know.
This is okay. This is where you help organize for your customers by grouping together similar request types so that they're within easy reach and you can do that using portal groups. So you set up a portal group so that you can categorize these request types. They're easier for your customers to find on the portal. All right. And if you have a request type that doesn't have a group, it doesn't appear in the portal.
Yep. But can still be selected if an agent clicks to create button.
True.
So it's it's not gone or hidden. So it's not wasted. You just access it a little bit differently.
Right. But at that point, if you're an agent, you're not the you're not the you're doing this for the customer. You're not having the customer select.
Right. But then it's but it's still very, I never quite understood why go through all the effort to create a for like a request only to not make it visible to the customer.
There you go.
And billable hours, right? Bob's like I'm a plead the fifth on that.
Nope, not gonna say a thing. All right, so with you can as a project admin, you can create portal groups by going to project settings, going to channels and self-service, expanding it out, looking at portal. And then there are for the portal, there are two tabs. The one to the right portal groups is the one you're looking at. You can even create groups. And in the portal group that you can create, you can associate what request types belong in that portal group now. A individual request type could be in more than one portal group. That's perfectly fine. And finally, one last thing to help you organize. And we've talked about this before is we can create queues to organize the requests that come in. So if you are an agent, you're able to view the queues. They help you prioritize and complete the work. Making sure that you keep your service level agreements or your SLAs before you breach those those SLAs and it becomes a significant problem. So you can group together, create and group together queues. You have criteria, things like maybe the SLAs, maybe the request type, the assignee or maybe other custom fields. All right, you could create a queue that it only looks at tickets that are assigned to an individual agent. You could create a queue that highlights the P1 incidents that have breached the time to first response SLA. Or you could show the you could have a queue to show the requests that have a due date of next week. So that you can kind of judge what work that you need to do. So this is a matter of of agents and admins working together to figure out what you need in a queue. And making sure that the queue is I I wouldn't say esoteric, the opposite of esoteric.
I don't know, dude, you got if I didn't learn in the third grade, I don't know that word. You got you gotta bring it to me. It's like a third grade level.
Oh, my gosh. What'd you get on the SATs again?
Barely enough to pass. This is why. What do you think I called the book, the big book of Atlassian? Like, that's like a Dr. Seuss thing.
You didn't want to call it like the the voluminous tome? I I'm stealing that. I I it's an even bigger book. I'll just say the voluminous tome. And then parentheses, bigger book of Atlassian.
The bigger, bigger, bigger book. Oh, man. Do your cues have lightning lanes? No.
No, I didn't think so.
I'm wondering how much of Sean's referencing a Disney thing for Lightning Lane?
Yeah, I think that's a Disney thing. Okay. Now, one of the nice things with JSM as as with JIRA is that there is some automation that you can leverage. And we're not just talking about automation rules. We can also talk about fleshing out your process through the workflow transitions through approvals. But yes, also automation rules. So there are some things that you can do in your workflows that your customer can work through so that the workflow proceeds along. All right. There are customer transitions that are available in the portal so that the customer can just go into the portal, go into the the existing request in the portal and do a few things. One of them may be through a workflow transition. If the customer comments on the workflow on the on the request in the portal, it can automatically trigger a workflow transition from a waiting to a customer to back to a waiting for support type of thing. And this is how you can make sure that you're responding to the messages from from the customer in a timely manner. All right. A customer could also perform approvals from the portal. And when they do that, the based upon the approval, it may go into an approved state or go into a rejected state depending upon what option the the customer chooses in the portal. Now you can also have one or more approval levels in the workflow and those and each approval could go to a different set of people. In whether or not they're individual users, whether or not there are specific roles in a project or if there are specific groups. So there are so when you set up when you are a JIRA admin, this is where the JIRA admins have play over the over the workflow. They'll specify when when an approval is needed. Who needs to approve it, right? Whether it's and using what's known as the approval field, which is typically a user field versus an approval group field, which is more of a group field. And then the the actions if a if a yes happens versus if a no happens. So only JIRA admins can define approvers for request type or add an approval step to workflow. So JSM also comes with some example automation rules to allow for you know, any repetitive tasks to just be automatically done.
Real quickly on this blue part for the JIRA admins. If technically in the permission scheme, you have that whole can edit the workflow permission, like doesn't this open it up for others?
It opens it up. So it it does. But there's a few, a few caveats, right?
One is it can't be shared, right? That's the big one.
That's the big one. It's it's gotta be local to that. That but also that since that is a project permission that can be based upon role or group or user. Right? So.
But would you be able to add an approval step if you assuming you hit the conditions? It's so hard for us, right? Because we always have all the rules. I mean, we always have all the permissions. It's hard to be not an admin. It's something I would want to test because I don't know that I necessarily believe that box that.
To the JIRA.
I'm an admin on everything.
Yeah, we I don't think I don't think we're I don't think we have something built up to.
To test it quickly? No, and we only have 10 minutes.
Not to test it quickly.
Come back next Monday, folks. Hit the subscribe button and drop a like.
Yeah, we're gonna give homework to Rodney because he's not here. Too, because she's 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 entertaining her niece. I mean, where where could where in where in St. Louis could she be going to entertain her niece?
Menards?
Okay, I wasn't I wasn't gonna go there and 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 foster more trouble than I'm in, but you know.
Dude, have you ever been to Menards?
I've been to a Menards, yes.
It's like the best store in the world. I always tell people it's like if if Walmart and Home Depot had a baby, you could have Menards. It's my favorite store in the whole wide world.
I'm trying to remember. That almost sounds like Tractor Warehouse. I don't know if you have that.
Yeah, I do, but I don't know. Tractor Warehouse still is more country, less less Walmart-y. Like if you can buy chickens at Tractor Warehouse, you ain't picking up chickens at Home Depot or Walmart.
That is, well, I mean, you aren't picking up live chickens at at Walmart, so.
Well, I guess so, but still. But yeah, Menards would be my favorite. I don't know what else there is to do in St. Louis. I mean, all the museums are free. So I guess maybe she is walking distance to Forest Park. So she might just be down at the one of the museums.
Okay.
They're really beautiful, um what is that thing when you lay on the ground and you can see the stars? Planetarium or something?
Okay, Planetarium I usually think of as a building, but.
Well, it's a building, but it's, so they have like a show you can watch and you lay down and they'll guide you through the, through the starry night.
Oh, that's kinda cool.
Yeah, I lived in the Louvre for three years.
Okay, so uh some things that you could do with automation, you could assign tickets. Uh the new tickets could be auto-assigned to the correct team uh based upon things like work type and priority. You could send notifications like um. What happened, uh you can promptly send a notification to a customer. Uh that's known as an external notification or an internal notification to agents. Um if a status has changed or a ticket is created.
What, one thing I'll caution you all, one thing I'll caution you is unless you're using like assets and full ITSM. At least all the people I work with, were you usually on the standard version of JSM and not on the premium? Which means that on the standard, you get significantly less automation rules per, in your instance. So sending notifications and assigning tickets, like I would work out different ways to get that information. So I wouldn't necessarily use up a, a precious automation rule.
No, and there's, and there's definitely uh some more power that. JSM has over the regular Jira where with the regular Jira. You, not only do you have the standard notification scheme with, okay, what happens when a comment is added? Or what to this work item or a uh, or the work item is transitioned or closed. But you also have the same things for a customer notification.
Yeah, I would say similar. I don't wanna say exactly the same. But yeah, I would tweak that before you go sending emails out.
Right.
Per, per an automation rule. The update tickets is a little bit more, I would reserve it for that. But just be careful, cause again, not everybody's on the premium version of JSM, cause it does cost. When you get to the fifty-two, fifty-three dollar range, it starts costing a pretty penny. But still cheaper than the competitor.
Yep.
Bring us home, Bob. We got seven minutes.
You got seven minutes? Okay. Um, so one thing you can do is, we talked about these uh notifications. We can um, we have internal notifications. These go to the agents. These go to the IT. The IT team.
The licensed users.
Right. And then uh they can uh email the agents. These two people, the service desk manager and the service desk team, may not have um agent licenses. They may be other members of the team, like maybe a, a developer. Now, a service desk manager may get. A notification based on escalation. Alright, if, if a particular request is in danger of. Uh breaching a service level agreement, send a notification out to the service manager. Or if the uh request is a high priority incident. Center, send a notification to the service desk manager. And filing services team, um you can create an automation rule, run on a schedule to produce a list of work items. So basically, a um service desk team can get. The list of all of the P1 incidents that have occurred in the previous month. For a specific customer. Alright, configuring on-call rotations. Now, Alex is actually the guy that can kinda speak to this because he wrote about this in, in our book. When it was part of OpsGen, uh when it was part of OpsGen, but OpsGen is being deprecated. Uh and those functions are being absorbed into Jira Service Management, and so.
And to a team too. You need to be in a team now.
Yes, you need to be in a team. You, and I kinda, I kinda call it an Atlassian team. Um you kinda call it a half-baked team, which you, you're, you're not getting an argument from me. So.
Not, I'm not the biggest fan.
I'm. They're, they're moving in the right direction, so. It's, that's, that's what I have to say about that. They're moving, the, they're not there yet, but they're moving in the right direction.
Do you have, if you want me to read this?
Uh, if you want.
Alright, you can use on-call features in your service projects to create on-call teams structured by department, function, or other criteria. And you're probably gonna create that Atlassian team first, before you do any of this. Um but for example, the Alpha Team follows a daily on-call rotation for handling P1, priority one incidents. On the customer-facing website, uh JSM notifies the team members at the start of their shift. And boy, oh boy, does it tell you, because you will get an email every time. Trust me, I've been trying to get out of a couple since we wrote the book. Every couple of weeks, I get a notification. Uh if a customer reports a P1 incident, the service project will assign it to the team member currently on-call. So this is something you configure and you actually go and set it up, so you have all the members of your team, then you kinda build a schedule, uh and then it'll respect that schedule. Yeah, so another word for rotation would be like schedule. Uh typically, alerts go to multiple users or groups based on the notification preferences. You can also configure escalations to alert responders. According to a set order, and when you link an escalation to an alert, it's escalation rules notify responders once the specified. Time elapses and the alert's condition is met. So for example, you can configure an escalation policy so that it alerts users in this order. And then I guess if you wanna show the whole thing, you can go IT support team. If the IT support team doesn't acknowledge, then it goes to the IT manager. If the IT manager doesn't acknowledge, then it goes to the IT director, and if all else fails, it goes to the CTO. Uh you don't want things to get to your CTO.
That's not good.
I would even argue, you don't want things to get to the director either. Manager maybe, but you best get on that. You better be, you, you better, like a really good reason why you didn't get on that alert.
Uh three and four defined times are probably like in the order of like, you know, weeks. Yeah, I, I, I think that might be the ultimate one.
After that one, I think you're like calling your old boss and asking for your job back. Alright, so to ensure that users receive the alert, you can use multiple notification channels such as emails, alerts, and notifications. And I think even Slack now, no? Like, you might be able to send Slack stuff.
I think, yeah, I think Slack is uh in there, I think. Um, so when they say email alerts and notifications, it's not just. Uh one thing, it's also things like SMS text messages um. And, and yeah, things like Slack or Teams. Alright, three questions and then. And then that will be the end mercifully, right?
Yeah.
Alright, Caliani, a customer service manager, wants customers to be able to update the status of a ticket from the customer portal. What functionality can meet this requirement? A, work type, B, request type, C, workflow transition, or D, screen?
Workflow transition?
That's what I was thinking. You can, you, you, you can in uh make some workflow transitions. Available to customers. Approvals are a big example of this. Because there's an approval, but uh.
Escalation too, like the escalate button, the close button, the resolve button, the reopen button?
Yep, those are all examples of, of workflow transitions that you can have on the uh individual request type on a portal.
Look at that, Bob. We can, we don't, we don't need Sarah to know our JSM crap.
We should make.
You gonna plead the fifth again?
Oh, big time.
You gotta be a rebel with me.
No.
Alright, um do we wanna, I don't, I don't wanna call it LG here, but. It, it wouldn't be request type, because once they submit the request, like you can't change it. And.
Notify.
Are you reading the question?
Oh, yeah. Uh Ching, an IT uh manager, wants to be notified whenever an internet outage occurs. What functionality can meet this requirement? Creating an automation rule, configuring a work type, configuring a screen, or creating a request type? And I think LG has her answer. I have mine too. Are they the same answer?
I, I think we should eliminate, like, screen? It's not notifications. Those are just gonna be fields.
Right.
So I would, that's like the one that's clearly not, not happening. This is what I usually do on the test. I think request type and work type are too closely related. So I would normally be very cautious about picking either or, because I'm gonna have to really, really know why there's this clear difference between the two. I always feel like Atlassian tries to trick you by throwing you a bunch of common things, and I'm like, no, these are too closely related, so they shouldn't apply. And in this particular case, work types and request types, they don't necessarily manage the notifications.
Okay.
So that leaves us with A.
Creating an automation rule? Alright. That's correct. So um now, as Alex has mentioned, um he's not a big fan of using an automation rule for this. Because um if you are, if you're not a premium or, or an enterprise user. Uh those automation rule executions are like gold, so you do wanna use, um you wanna be judicious. Or, or let me, let me dumb it down to the third grade level. You wanna be wise as far as when to use an automation rule versus uh.
I wanna use the word careful.
Okay, careful. That's the, wise or careful, that's, that's third grade enough, right?
I think why is like fifth grade. I, I'll go with careful.
Okay, you wanna be careful when um uh what you use your automation rules for, since you have a limited number. Um but out of these four options, the most correct one that would spur. A uh notification. Could, would be the creating an automation rule.
Ding ding ding. Next question.
Last que, next question, last question. Team Frodo, the incident response team at Acme, is setting up a project for incident management. They plan to use only on-call and alert features. They would also like to monitor and improve their incident management process to meet their business needs. What should be enabled or disabled in their ITSM project?
Oh, definitely something with work categories.
Uh so as far as.
Oh, no, wait, no, wait. I read that wrong. I, I got. They plan on only using on-call and alert, okay. Yeah, I think work categories is fair to talk about, but let's see what the options are.
Okay, uh there are two here with work categories. We can look at those first. Disable all work categories except incident management.
Maybe.
Disable all work categories except incident management and post-incident reviews.
Hmm, I don't think I'm convinced on the work categories one now.
Okay.
So, oh wait, it was multiple choice.
Uh yeah, you can.
So I think I, I would go with the last one and the second one.
So, last one?
And the second one.
Okay.
Cause you don't want the services, there's, there's a lot in that ITSM project. The service is just one.
Yeah, alerts and on-call, um on-call is a setting that comes under feature, so. That has to be enabled. That's separate from the work categories.
And then for the post-incident reviews, I, I feel like if you wanna improve your incident management process, I think it's easy to just only turn on incident management. But after you have an incident, you always wanna do a, a, what's commonly known as a PIR.
Right, and, and that's available only in a uh. It's in the problem management.
Yeah, punch it. Ooh, but. Isn't that what we picked?
No.
Oh, they want us to disable services? Why would you do that? Where's that last one? Let's call him up. You, I, I mean, you can disable services, but it would be more smart to make sure you have on-call enabled. Unless that's not a feature you can turn on and off.
I thought it was a feature you could turn on or off.
Yeah, I'm gonna go check. Features for JSM, service requests, views, incident. There's, yeah, alerts and on-call are two that are, that are there.
Yeah.
I think it's a dumb question. I would, I would make sure those are enabled. As opposed to turning off services.
Okay, alright, we're gonna move, we're gonna move on.
Well, try again and get it right, even though their question is wrong.
Uh alright, so, oh, they moved it around. Okay, it's not the.
Last one now. And the first one. And with that, we are done.
We're done. Hey, great work. Alright, and with that, we are done with this course on uh, this part of the course. On configuring service projects for IT service management. As far as, and next, possibly, we'll see. Is improving the ITSM customer experience. But before that, we're gonna be, we're gonna be back tomorrow uh with our regular Jira life. The one that, the one that I actually produce. Um and in there, we're gonna have Josh Costella as our guest. And he's gonna talk about all the stuff he's doing, including. Being a keynote speaker for the Atlassian Builder Summit. So, should be a fun time.
Yeah, I wonder if he'll address some, some rumors too.
He might. It depends.
We'll find out, won't we?
We'll find out. So with that, we will see you tomorrow.
Hi, everyone.
Bye.